Everybody. Everybody down. Everybody. Everybody down. Everybody. Everybody down.
So this effect, you use two by fours.
So, we got the house prepped up.
Am I needed anymore?
Uh, not really. What do you want to help?
So basically, there isn't really a real witch under there, which we won't share with the audience.
Yeah, I'm hiding underneath there.
Yeah, we just have to be...
Because Angie Gazner is actually under there. It's a magic trick.
Yeah. And we slide the, uh, actually slide the...
And they're attached to a string, a wire?
Yeah, they're attached to strings. The crags.
That looks painful, Angie. Are you feeling okay?
I'm feeling good.
So then we got the strings, you know?
Okay, let's see the strings. The strings run underneath.
And then when the cue goes, it just goes...
Wow. Okay, well that was clever. So then she, how does she get her shoes on in the crowd?
She's behind...
Are they hidden?
Glenda's got a really big skirt, so she stands slightly behind the skirt and then Munch can just help her slip her shoes on and her other shoes off. He disappear and then she pops out from behind Glenda.
Thank you for coming. We hope you enjoy this afternoon's performance.
Auntie Euph! Auntie Euph!
Is that one of them today?
Just listen to what Miss Gulch did to Total! She just...
Dorothy, please, train cat.
Oh, but Aunt Euph, she...
Don't love us now, honey. You see, this old incubator's gone bad. We'd like to lose a lot of our chicks.
Aw, poor little thing, Grandma. But Aunt Euph, really, Miss Gulch hit Total right over the back of the rake, just before she says he gets into her garden and chases her nasty old cat every day.
Stephanie, Dorothy, please.
But he doesn't do it every day. Just once or twice a week. And he can control cat anyhow.
Dorothy, we're busy.
Uncle Henry, can't you do something?
I'm doing something right now, honey. So just keep out of our hair.
Oh, no. Zee, Hickory, just listen to what Miss Gulch did to Total!
Swear, they made this new wheel smaller than the other three.
She tried to kill him!
Get it on here before my armors bolt through out of the socket. I ain't a statue, you know? I ain't laid of iron. All right, all right.
Why would anyone listen? He's looking to kill me, Total!
Ow! You got my finger!
What am I going to do about Miss Gulch, huh? Just because Total chases her old cat?
Now look at Dorothy. You ain't using your head about Miss Gulch. Ain't you got no brains?
Sure I do, thanks.
Then why don't you use them? When you come home, don't go by Miss Gulch's place. Aunt Total won't keep you in her garden and you won't get no trouble, see? Quit just standing there and clear that junk out of that wagon. We got parts on the lumber to haul from Tommy for the weather turn. Will do, Mrs. Gale.
Zee, what am I going to do?
Well, first start, kid, don't let that old Gulch ever try to buffalo you. You just gotta stand up to her, that's all. A little courage, a little grit.
I'm not afraid of her.
That's what I want to hear. Now, you gotta walk tall with your chest out. Then the next time she squawks, you just stroll right up to her and spit in her eye. That's right.
Would you really?
Sure I would. Through this life, you gotta walk tall and shoot straight. And then you got no reason to be afraid or nothing or nothin'.
Oh, Zee! Are you all right?
What are you trying to do, kill a guy?
How could you be so cruel?
Oh, just a rib, Dorothy.
Can't you see how white he is? You really scare him!
Who scared? You was scared. If you was a jackrabbit, you'd be in the next county by now.
Here, here. What's all this chatter happening about when there's work to be done? I know three shits in this farm have to be out of the job before they know it.
We were just having a little fun, Miss Gale.
A farm's no place for fun. You want fun, don't join circus.
I just do that. Be strong, man. See the world.
Don't start posing right now. Here, have some cookies. Camper kind of stuff.
Gosh, Mrs. Gale. Thanks. Swell!
Well, you don't have to sit down to eat them. Get that wagon hitched up. Zee, go feed the hogs before they worry themselves and won't mean.
Get around.
Auntie Euph, really! Miss Gulch is going to kill me!
Dorothy dear, stop imagining things. You always worry yourself and do proud for nothing.
Well...
Well, you just keep us out of our hair today and go find yourself a place where you won't get any trouble.
A place where there isn't any trouble? I wonder if there is such a place, Total? There must be. Not a place you can get to by boat or train, but it's a place far, far away, behind the moon, beyond the rains.
Somewhere over the rainbow, where the... Somewhere over the rainbow, skies are blue. And the dreams that you dare to dream really do come true. Someday I'll wish upon a star and wake up where the clouds are far behind me. Quench roads sound like lambing drums, away above the chilly tombs, that's very often near. Somewhere over the rainbow, blue as... Birds fly over the rainbow, why I can't fly.
Auntie Gale, is that you skulking by the bar?
I never skulked in my life, Miss Gulch. I ain't about to start now.
I need to speak with you and your wife right away about Dorothy.
Dorothy? Why? What has Dorothy done?
What's she done? I'm all but playing from the bite of my leg.
You mean she bit you?
No, her dog.
Oh, she bit her dog, eh?
Afternoon, Miss Gulch. Just made a fresh batch of cookies and used them on ice for a while.
I'm afraid I have no appetite. You know, I'm so shaken by the ferocious attack from these vicious dogs, I may never eat again.
You don't eat your best way. And I'd hate to see you go in dog.
Dorothy, would you bring Total out in a minute? I'm sure Dorothy's done anything to upset you. She's been too glad to apologize, as she can.
It's gone beyond apologies, Mrs. Gale. I've laid an official complaint with county sheriff.
Was it sober?
Dorothy, Miss Gulch is very upset.
That dog is a menace to the community.
That's not true!
It's acting public service, young woman. I'm taking him to the sheriff to make sure he's destroyed.
Destroyed? Total? Oh, you can't! Maybe you mustn't. Uncle Henry, Auntie Euph, you won't murder, will you?
Of course we won't. Will we hurt him?
Oh, Auntie Euph, please! Total didn't know he was doing anything wrong. I'm a woman, not to be punished. You can suffer, but don't suffer.
You hear? I'm sorry, child. That surely if she promises to give your face a wide berth...
If you don't have the dog over now, I'll bring a damage suit that'll take your whole farm. There's a law protecting folks against dogs that fight.
Well, how would it be if she kept him tied up? He's really gentle, gentle folk, that is.
Well, that's for the sheriff to decide. Here's his order law me to take him, unless you want to go against the law.
Uncle Henry, don't!
That's more like it.
Oh, don't, y'all!
Now, Marty, don't. Just because you're on half a count, it doesn't mean you have power over the rest of us. For twenty-three years, I've had a daughter tell you what I thought of you, and now...
Well, being a Christian woman, I just can't say...
Well, I can. So if you don't want to hear, you better nail your carcass off to my land.
I don't take kindly to that kind of talk, Henry Gale. Just you remember, I have friends in high places.
Then why don't you go get on your broomstick and go visit them?
Total, darling! Oh, you got away from that horrible man, you wonderful dog. Oh, but she'll be coming back for you in a minute. We've got to get away. We've got to run away. Oh, won't you leave me and it won't for you, and that we're going far, far away from here, and we're never, ever coming back.
Well, 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 little house guest, huh? And who might you be? No, no, don't tell me. You're, you're traveling in disguise. No, that's not it. You're, you're going on a visit. No, I'm wrong. You're, you're running away.
How did you guess?
Professor Marvel never guesses. He knows. Now, why are you running away? No, no, don't tell me. They, they don't understand you at home. They don't appreciate you. You went to see other lands, big cities, big mountains, big oceans.
Why, it's like the green room was inside of me.
It's my train, my calling. See what it says on the side of my conveyance? Now, um, where were we?
Professor Marvel, please. Why can't we go with you to see all the crown heads of Europe?
Do you know anything? Oh, yes, yes, you mean the, the things. Well, I, I, I never knew anything without consulting my crystal first. Here, sit right down and make yourself comfortable while I conjure out a bear, out of thin air, this very same genuine magic authentic crystal used by the priests of Isis and Osiris in the days of the pharaohs of Egypt, in which Cleopatra first saw the approach of Julius Caesar in our country. Now, pull out your hands. We will give you to the bridge. Yes, yes. Now, you better close your eyes, my child, be in a better tune with the environment. Be, be cantuses, they without you, but it's... Yes, yes, that's good. Now, you know that. And the gaze into the crystal. Now, what's this I see? I see a house with a picket fence.
That's our farm!
Yes, yes, and I see a woman, and her face is Carowan, and she's wearing a polka dot dress.
That's Auntie Euph!
Yes, yes, her name, name is Emily.
Ah, that's right. Well, what's she doing?
Why, she's crying.
Oh!
Someone has hurt her. Someone has just about broken her heart.
But why would anyone learn to that?
I don't know, but it's someone she loves very much, someone she's been very kind to, someone she's taken care of in sickness.
Well, I had a measles once, and she stayed by myself every minute.
Uh-huh.
But that was when I was very small. She doesn't care about me anymore, and I don't care about her.
Well, that's not what the crystal says.
There was land to kill Total, and she did nothing to stop them!
I don't see any of that in the crystal. All I see is a woman who loves you very much and misses you something terrible.
Well, what's she doing now?
I don't know. I can't quite see. She's putting her hand in her heart. She's dropping down... She's putting her hand in her heart. She's dropping down the bar.
What's wrong with her?
And I can't say. The crystal's got it.
Oh, you, you don't suppose you can really resist, do you? Oh, I'm going to get home right away.
What? I thought you were coming along with me.
Oh, no. I'm going to go to Auntie Yow. Goodbye, Professor Marvel. Thanks a lot.
Goodbye. Safe journey.
Coursey. Dorothy, you have to get the horses loose. Bye, Hickory. Now, got it, Hickory? It's a twister. Oh, it's a twister. Dodge your way!
Auntie Yow! Auntie Yow! Auntie Yow! Where is everybody? Oh, Total. I have a feeling we're not in Kansas anymore. We must be over the rainbow! Although I, I know we're not in Kansas.
Are you a good witch or a bad witch?
Who, me? Oh, I'm not a witch at all. I'm Dorothy Gale, from Kansas.
Who is that witch?
Who, Total? Oh, Total's my dog.
Well, I'm a little one. The munchkins call me because a new witch has just dropped a house in the Wicket Witch of the East. And there's the house, and here you are. And those lives where all the fat have been the witch of the east. So, would the munchkins want to know this? Are you a good witch or a bad witch?
Oh, but I've already told you. I'm not a witch at all. Witches are old and ugly. Who's that?
The munchkins. They're laughing because I am a witch. I'm Linda, the witch of the north.
You are? Oh, I beg your pardon. It's just, I've never heard of a beautiful witch before.
Only bad witches are ugly. The munchkins are laughing because I'm rid of them from the Wicket Witch of the East.
But, if you please, what are munchkins?
A little people who live in this land and blue is their favorite color. This is munchkin land, and you are their national heroine, my dear. Out on the mount wherever you are, be to your baby who fly from a star. She flies in the sky, she fell there before, and Kansas, she says, is the name of a star.
Kansas, she says, is the name of a star.
She brings you good news, a rabbit you heard, and she fell out of Kansas, a miracle occurred. It really was a miracle, the captain was just this. The wind began to switch, the house to pitch, and suddenly the hedges started to unhitch. You sent the witch to satisfy an itch, when flying on a broomstick, humming for a witch.
Oh, what happened then? A witch! The house began to pitch, the hitch began to switch, and then it, I'm a wicked witch, and they're all a witch. This is not a happy scene, it's a rush of war, a war of witch. The house began to pitch, the hitch began to switch, and then it, I'm a wicked witch, and they're all a witch. This is not a happy scene, it's a rush of war, a war of witch.
Thank you very sweetly for doing it so deeply, thank you very sweetly. Let the joyous news be spread, the wicked old witch at last is dead!
As mayor of the munchkin city, in the county of the land of Oz, I welcome you most freely, Polly.
What we've got to bear for is seeing.
Going to see? To see? If she? If she? Is morally ethical, spiritually, physically, positively absolute, undeniably, and reliably dead.
As coroner, I must defer to the only examiner. And she can not only be, but she's really most sincerely that.
This is thinking, this is all the munchkins are descended.
Yes, I do.
Yes, let the joyous news be spread, wicked old witch at last is dead!
We represent the lullaby, the lullaby, the lullaby, and in the name of the lullaby. We represent the lollipop guild, the lollipop guild, the lollipop guild, and in the name of the lollipop guild. We wish to welcome you to Munchkin.
Now our new history is going to be history. You'll be a part of us, we must.
I thought you said you was dead!
That's the wicked witch who came to you, sister. This is the wicked witch who fled. She is worse than the other of us.
Where's my sister?
Down to she lives.
Where?
There.
Alright, who is the smart aleck that turned her into a house? Was it you, Linda?
Not the house, under the house.
Under the house?
I'm sorry. It's my fault. My house dropped on her.
How could you drop your house on my sister? I can't believe anyone can be so unbelievably clumsy.
Look closer.
You recognize her, then? Of course I recognize her! What's she wear ruby slippers with those socks?
My Auntie Yow is missing. Does she believe in me sick? But I can't move back the way I came. How do I get back to Kansas?
No, let's try. No, we can't go the way I came. The only one who might know is the great and wanted Wizard of Oz's son.
Was it Oz? Is he good or is he a witch?
Oh, very good, very mysterious. He lives in the Emerald City. That's a long journey for me. Did you bring your boots to him?
No, I'm afraid I didn't.
Well, then you'll have to walk. The munchkins, they just saved the children of munchkin land. And remember, never let those ruby slippers off your feet for a moment, or you will be at the risk of the bigger witch in Oz.
But, but it's not for the Emerald City.
It's always best...
Now, here's your attention, please. Please stay in your seats. Enjoy the show.
I haven't got a brain, only straw. So I haven't got the mind to make up.
Well, how can you talk if you haven't got a brain?
Oh, I don't know, but some people without brains do an awful lot of talking, don't they?
Oh, no! I just thought you might have hurt yourself.
But I didn't scare you.
No, of course not.
I didn't think so. You see, I can't even scare a crow.
How do you name it?
They come from miles around just to eat in my field.
I'm a scarecrow?
And laugh in my face. You see? I could while away the others, conferred with the flowers, consulted with the rain. And I had, I'd be scratching my thoughts, were busy hatching if I only had a brain. I'd unravel every riddle to any individual in troubled thing.
With the thoughts, you'd be thinking you could be another witch.
If I only had a brain. Oh, why could tell me why the ocean's near the shore?
You could think of things you've never thought before.
And then I'd sit and think some more. I would not be just a nothing. My head a full of stuff and my heart a full of pain. I would dance and be merry, life would be a dream, and if I only had a brain...
I'm going all the way to see the wizard of Oz to get him to help me.
You're going to see a wizard?
Uh-huh.
Do you think if I went with you, this wizard could get me some brains?
Well, I couldn't say. But even if he didn't, you'd be nowhere south than you are now.
Yes, that's true.
But, maybe you'd better not. I've got a witch that's mad at me. You might get yourself in some trouble.
A witch? I'm not afraid of a witch. I'm not afraid of anything. Oh, except to let it hatch.
Oh, I don't blame you for that.
But I'd face a whole box of them for the chance to get me some brains. Look, I won't be any trouble because I don't need a thing, and I won't try to manage things because I can't think. Won't you take me with you?
Of course I will.
Hooray! I'm gonna get me a brain. Let's go!
What's scarecrow? It's a man! A man made out of tin!
What?
Oh!
Oil can. Oil can.
Did you say something?
Oil can.
He, he said oil can.
Oil can what?
Oh! Here it is. Where did much be all first?
My mouth. My mouth.
He said his mouth, no, the other side.
Man, man. My goodness, I can talk. Oh, my arms, please, oil my elbows. Oh. Oh. Ah!
Oh! Did that hurt you?
No, it feels wonderful.
Beautiful! What an echo! Smith forgot to give me a heart.
No!
A heart! If I only had a heart. I'd be tender, I'd be gentle, and awful sentimental regarding love and art. I'd be friends with the sparrows and the boy that shoots the arrows if I only had a heart. Picture me, a balcony, above a voice sings low.
Where for a clown? Romeo?
I hear a beat.
How sweet!
Just to register in motion, jealousy, devotion, and really feel the part. I could stay young and chipper and I'd argue with the zipper if I only had a heart.
Then perhaps you'll come with us to see the Wizard of Oz. We're on our way to get him a brain. I'm sure he'll give you a heart.
Well, stay away from her, scarecrow, or I'll stab a mattress with you. And you, Tin Man, I'll use you for a beehive.
I'm not scared of you.
That just proves you don't have a brain. Allow me to educate you. You're a scarecrow. Wanna play ball?
You're the best friends anybody can ever ask for. But, it's funny, because I feel as if I had known you all the time, but I couldn't have, could I?
I don't see how. You weren't riding with stuffed and sewn together, were you?
And I was standing over there rustling for the longest time.
And we should be thinking it, but it doesn't really matter. We know each other now, don't we?
That's right, we do. To odds?
To odds.
We have to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz. He is invisible, he's the devil, he's the boss. The devil, the devil, he's the boss of his own art. Because, 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 because...
Because of the wonderful things he does.
We have to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz.
That's not fair. I don't like this forest. It is dark and creepy.
Of course. I'm not very bright, but I think I'll get darker before it gets lighter.
Oh, you, you don't suppose you're gonna meet any wild animals, do you?
Hmm, you might. Animals that, that in straw?
Some, but mostly lions and tigers and bears.
Lions?
And, and tigers?
And bears.
Oh, lions and tigers and bears. Oh, my!
Lions and tigers and bears. Oh, my! Lions and tigers and bears. Oh, no! Lions and tigers and bears. Oh, no! Lions and tigers and bears. Oh, no! Lions and tigers and bears. Oh, no!
Good move. Good move. Ha, good move. Good move. I'll fight you both together if you want. Which one are you first? Which one are you first? Leave us alone! Oh, scared, huh? Afraid, huh? How long can this be fresh in that camp? Give it a fight, you shit in your yard. Put him up, you oxen and bag it, hey?
That's getting personal, lion.
Yes, get out and teach him a lesson.
Um, what's wrong with you teacher?
Well, I, I, I heard you. No! I'll get you later, pee-wee. Why do you have to hit me like that? I didn't bite him.
No, but you were going to! You want to be ashamed of yourselves. It's bad enough to go and pity on straw, but when you go around picking on poor little ghosts...
You didn't have to hit me like that. Is my nose bleeding?
Of course not! My goodness, what a fuss you're making. And actually, when you go around picking on things that are weaker than you, you're... Why? You're nothing but a coward!
You're right. I am a coward. I have no courage at all. I even scare myself just looking circles in my eyes. I haven't slept in weeks.
Why don't you try hunting sheep?
It doesn't do any good. I'm afraid of them.
Don't you think the wizard could help him too?
Well, I don't see why not. Listen, we're on our way to see a wizard, to get him a heart.
And to him a brain.
I'm sure he can get you some. I'm sure he'd give you his heart.
Oh, gee. But, but wouldn't, wouldn't you feel if you created to be seen in the presence of a cowardly lion?
No, of course not!
Oh, that's awful nice of you. Oh, my life has been simply unbearable. Even my family disowned me. Once, when I was just a little cub, my father took me to top, the highest mountain, and he waved his paws around and he said, "Son, one day, all this will be over." Oh, I was terrified! I'm afraid there's no denying, I'm just a damned lion, afraid I don't deserve. But I could show my promise of being a lion, not a novice, if I only had the nerve.
Oh, you'd be in a stride, a king down to the core. You could draw the way you've never drawn before.
And then I'd look and roar some more. I would show the darkness force, who is king around the forest, a king they'd pursue. Why, with my legal visa, I could be a nurse's visa if I really had the nerve. I'd be brave as a wizard.
I'd be gentle as a wizard.
I'd be clever as a gizzard.
If wizard is a wizard.
Then I'm sure to get a brain. A heart.
A heart.
Then I...
We'd love to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz. He is invisible, he's a clever wizard of Oz. If ever a wonderful wizard of Oz of wizard of Oz. Because, 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 because. Because of the wonderful things he does. We'd love to see the wizard, the wonderful wizard of Oz.
It's, it's snowing!
So cold, isn't it?
Have you ever seen anywhere so beautiful?
Oh, come on! What are we waiting for?
On to Oz.
To Oz!
To Oz!
We'd love to see the wizard.
Love to see, love to see.
The wonderful wizard of Oz. The wonderful wizard of Oz.
Have you ever seen anywhere so beautiful?
The walls are so high. I'm getting dizzy just over there. Ring the bell, scarecrow, let them know we're here. Okay, here goes. Come on, you now!
Don't do this.
Wait!
Can you read?
Read what?
The knoness!
What?
It's on the door. It's like it's a nose on my face. It's, it's... No, stop, just a minute!
Bell out of order. Please knock.
Well, that's not like it now. Take your business.
We'd love to see the wizard.
The wizard? The wizard? Ah, but nobody can see the Great Eyes. Nobody's ever seen the Great Eyes. Even I have never seen him!
Father? How do you know that there is one?
Because, 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 ah, if there wasn't a wizard... Wouldn't you be here?
Oh, please, sir. We've got to see the wizard. The good witch of the north sent us.
The princess! Oh, she's wearing the ruby slipper she gave her. No! So, yes, well, bust my butt! Why did you say that in the first place? That's a horse of a different color!
Who's he calling a horse? Why, if he wasn't on the other side of that door?
He's coming out.
He, uh, he'd be on this side.
Welcome to Emerald City!
Thank you!
You come home?
Oh, just the longest in wait.
Don't believe me. Every step is a breath. Any idea just how the wonderful place is ready? I've been trying to imagine it, but I haven't got a brain. They said I'd fall in love with it if I had a heart.
It's the one place where I don't need any courage. Because there's nothing there to scare me. Is there?
There's a garden spot I told, where it's never too hot and it's never too cold.
Where you're never too young and you're never too old and you're never too thin or tall.
And you're never, never, never too, 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 too small.
It's all true. Oh, we're not too mad, we're not too sane, and we don't compare and we don't complain. All we do is just sit tight, 'cause it's all so, 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 so right, right? Oh, oh, oh! Ch-ch-ch, oh, oh, oh! I need that! Let's hope we can get some more to the Merry Island House. We get a bad world and it's what you will get. There you are, we're lucky now till we're done. Yeah! Oh, oh, oh! A couple of two. Ah! Let's hope we love the day to the Merry Island House. Ha, ha, ha! We're gonna travel all over and saw the world around us. Ah, ah, ah! Ah, ah, ah! Merry Island House.
Here we go, the broken person can you clean it there? Ah, ah, there, ah, ah, there. Purple, red, and white stars. The sound we keep you up at night in the Merry Island House. Ah, ah, there, ah, ah, there. We'll see you next. The sound we keep you up at night in the Merry Island House.
Ah, ah, ah! Ah, ah, ah! Ha, ha, ha! Ho, 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 ho! Let's hope we love the day to the Merry Island House. Let's hope we love the day we, la, la, la! 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 There you go, there you go. There you go, there you go. It's okay! Everything is all right. Everything is just fine. The Great Eyes of Oz has got all the magic in hand. Open, son! Ah, ah, ah! Get on out here. Oh, I'm a tackle game! Get on out here! Oh, shit, boy! Instead of some goddamn... Get on home! Didn't you hear me? I said go home!
That's just what I'm trying to do, sir. That's why we have to see the wizard. All four of us.
Nobody can see the Great Eyes. Not nobody, not know how. You said you'd take us to it.
And I got a permit just for the occasion.
Not nobody, not know how. You just gotta make us see Dorothy. Dorothy! Did you say Dorothy? The witch is Dorothy? In person? Well, that makes a difference. I announced it once.
My, oh, I surrender.
I am Oz, the great and powerful. Who are you? Who are you? Who are you? Who are you?
I, if you please, I'm Dorothy, the small me.
Silence! The great Oz knows my name. Step forward, Tin Man. Oh, you dare to come to me for a heart? You clinking, clanking, flattering reflection of a religious joke?
Yes, sir, I mean, uh, your honor. See, a while ago, we were walking down the...
Who are you? And you, scarecrow, have the impromptu task for a brain. You billow in the head by the honor of...
Yes, your honor, I mean, um, your excellency. Oh, I mean, um, your wizardry?
Enough! And you, lion?
Uh, I, uh, I, I, um, I...
Whoa!
Oh! You must be ashamed of yourself, trying to think like this. What do you get if you do that?
I will not listen to you, sir. The better this is, Oz, the more I intend to grant you your request.
What, what did he say?
Are you all right?
He does a little deaf. What did he say?
He's going to help us after all.
He is?
But first, you must be with yourselves worthy of performing a very, very small task.
A small task? Is that all?
You name it, tap it on. Bring the little mistakes, all the way, all the less.
But, 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 if we do that, what if the killer forgets?
The great Oz has spoken. Now, now, now.
But, but what if she kills us first?
I want to go!
Ready to go, Dorothy? Best foot forward.
Decision, decision.
Come on, honey! Silence! Quiet! Oh, why do you always think that nonsense and dirt?
Since you put your foot through it, John, how else can we keep him still?
What does it mean, anyway?
You mean, yo-ee-yo, yo...
Yes, 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 that. Do the words mean anything?
It's an old Winkie Marchon song roughly meaning...
Next time I am saying, old nation, I must remember to bring out my telepath first. Ego, ego, where is the commander of my arrogant games? There you are, my simian minion. I have an important task for you. My enemies are about to enter the haunted forest. I need you to rouse your men and snatch the sickening little girl into equally nauseating little dog and bring them both to me. Now go, do my bidding! Oh, here's another notice.
I hope this was a little more reassuring.
I turn back if I were you.
Okay. Oh, 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 no.
I, I believe that there's spooks around here.
That's ridiculous. Spooks, that's silly.
You don't believe in spooks?
No, only fools believe.
Ah! Oh, take that!
Are you all right?
I do believe in spooks. I do, I do, I do, I do believe in spooks. I do believe in spooks. I do, I do, I do, I do.
Oh, so do I. What's it?
Look at the size of them, birds!
Not birds, they're puppies! They're puppies!
How? Scarecrow, what's happened to you? Well, they tore my legs off and they threw them over there. And then they tore my arm off and they threw it over there. Scarecrow, that's you all over.
It's time you pull yourself together.
I've got it, but I can't reach my legs.
I'll do it. Then we'll go find Dorothy.
That's right, and the Lion will lead us.
Yeah. Me?
Yes, you.
I'm gonna lead us against the forces of evil?
That's right.
Oh, I'll do, I'll do it for Dorothy. We can wait till noon. God, you know, because I'll tear him apart. I may not count alive, but at least I'll go down fighting. There's only one thing I want to tell you.
What's that?
Target the animal that...
This way, my dear, I trust you have plenty of light. It's so nice of you to visit me, my loneliness. Give me the dog. Why don't you have a dog? Tonight, we feast on devil's claws. No! It's all right, my dear, just my little joke. He's looking more adorable with an apple in his mouth. Here, put him in the basket. Where are you taking him? Why can't he stay with me? Because the raging roar of river is sunlight off. Is he a water breed? I don't think so. Well, he's still willing, because that's where we want to dump him if you don't hand over those slippers. But the good witch of the north told me not to. Very well, take that basket and throw it to the deepest part of the river and drown him. No, no, no! Oh, you're gonna get slummed yourself! I don't want them, just, just give me that title. That's a good little girl, I knew you'd see reason. No! No! No, no, no! Catch him, you whore!
Dorothy, where are you? It's me, it's Auntie Auntie. We're trying to find her.
Oh, Auntie Auntie, I'm losing out. The witch has locked me up in her castle. I'm trying to get home to you, Auntie Auntie.
Ah!
Look away, look away, Auntie Auntie! Come back, come back! Auntie Auntie, Auntie Auntie! I'll get you, Auntie Auntie, my pretty!
Kill me, Dorothy! You still gotta find a way to the castle. Oh, look out! I think I've got a plan to get us into the witch's castle. It might not work.
It might not work.
But it's got a chance.
It's got a chance.
The only thing is, it's very dangerous. What do you say?
I say, uh, anybody else got a plan?
Let's hear it, scarecrows. First, we have to get a hold of three winky unicorns.
I don't know. Where are we gonna get three winky unicorns?
I don't know, but the whole plan depends on it.
Three winky unicorns. I don't know, we're not gonna happen to them.
Why's that?
Because the rainbow hide goes.
The stairs almost run out, and then the witch will come back to me. Good witch of the north, won't you help me now? Please help me, wants anybody help me? No!
Dorothy, are you in there? Dorothy, it's us, we're doing all right.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm fine, but the witch has locked me in.
Stand back or I'm breaking open.
Oh, hurry, please hurry, the outer glass is almost empty. Oh! Oh, oh, Toto. Oh, I knew you guys would come.
Hurry, we've got no time to lose.
Breaker of the Rosie is hot and full of spears. The saddest of time has run out for all of you. The last to go will see the first three go before her. And your little dog, too. Meaty, meaty, mighty Bo, who will be the first to go? Lion? Girl? Tin Man? No, my groom has chosen scarecrow.
Oh, help, help, help!
What's the matter? Don't you want to be my old lady? Let it walk, catch its tail, boy! I'll get round to you eventually, Miss Mal. Meanwhile, watch the little red wolf and smoke.
Oh, no, please, please.
It's too late, scarecrow, you're all burned up. No, no, I love you! Ah, oh, you curse the rat! I love what you've done! I'm melting, melting, oh! Where, 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 oh, poor wolf! Then a good little girl like you can destroy my beautiful wickedness! Oh, oh!
She, she's dead? Did you kill her?
I didn't mean to kill her, really, I didn't.
Help Dorothy, the wicked witch is dead!
You are now our queen.
Oh, well, that's very kind of you, but I have to go back to Kansas. The witch's room, may we take it?
Please, take it with you.
Oh, thank you so much! Now that we've got back to the wizard of Oz, it tells us the wicked witch is dead!
Step forward if you dare. Can I believe my eyes? Why have you come back?
Well, sir, we've done what you asked us. We've brought you back from roosting of the wicked witch of the west. We've melted her.
Oh, you're wicked, right? Very exhausted.
So, sir, um, we leave you long here, and you can keep your promises to us.
Not so bad, not so bad. All that gives me, how little thought. Go away and come back tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Oh, but I want to go home now!
Do not allow time for rain.
Yes!
Do not allow to the wrath of the great and powerful Oz.
You were really great, Oz, you gave me promises.
You presume to criticize on great Oz? You are a wicked creature. Think yourselves lucky that I'm giving you money tomorrow instead of twenty years from now. The great Oz has spoken, and now go!
Who are you?
I, I am Oz, the great and powerful.
Oh, I don't believe you.
Well, I'm afraid there's no other wizard but me. You humbug?
Yeah!
Yes, that's exactly so. I'm a humbug.
Oh, you're a very bad man.
Oh, no, my dear, I'm a very good man. I'm just a very bad wizard.
But what about the hearty promise, Tin Man?
Well, I...
And the courage, promise to cower to Lion?
Well, I...
Scarecrow's brain.
Why, anybody can have a brain. That's a very mediocre commodity. Back where I come from, we have universities where people go to become great thinkers. And when they come out, they think deep thoughts. And they have no more brains than you have. But they have one thing you haven't got, a diploma. Therefore, by the authority vested in me by the universal artist, Mityatem, in Glorius Hunum, I hereby confer upon you the honor degree of THD.
THD?
Yes, that's, uh, Doctor of Ethology.
And some of the square roots many to sides in Isas' tribe is evil of the square root that remain inside? Oh, joy, rapture, I've been brave, and I ever made you enough.
Well, you can't. And as for you, my fine friend, you are the unfortunate solution. That's simply because you run away from danger, you have no courage. You're confusing courage with wisdom. Back where I come from, we have people who are called heroes. Once a year, they take their fortitude out of mothballs and parade it down the main street of the city. And they have no more courage than you have. But they have one thing you haven't got, a medal. Therefore, meritorious talent, extraordinary valor, and conspicuous bravery against wicked witches, I award you the triple cross. You are now a member of the Legion of Curly! Oh, shucks, shucks. Hard to speak to say. And as for you, my yelpin' eyes friend, you went on hearts. You don't know how lucky you are not to have one. Hearts will never be made practical until they can be made unwreckable.
But I, I still want one.
Back where I come from, we have people who do nothing all day but good deeds. They're called Phil, Phil, good deed doers. And their hearts are no bigger than yours. But they have one thing you haven't got, a testimonial. Therefore, I take pleasure in this card and confer upon you a small token of our esteem and affection. And remember, my sentiment friend, their heart does not judge by how much you love them, but by how much you are loved by others.
Dicks, listen to my heart, dicks!
We, we would have said that by better.
What, the courage?
Oh, ain't it the truth, ain't it the truth?
Oh, they're all so wonderful.
What about Dorothy?
Yes, Dorothy next.
Uh...
Oh, well, it means I'm not feeling that good, isn't it?
Well, you forced me to a cataclysmic decision. You see, the only way for me to get Dorothy back to Kansas is for me to take her myself.
Can you? Will you? Oh, but are you a clever and a wizard to manage it?
Child, you cut me to the quick. I'm an old Kansas man myself. Premier balloonist, our excellence, to the Wonderland Company. By one day, while performing spectacular feats of stratospheric skill never before attempted by civilized man, we were meant fair to return to the fair.
Frightened were you?
Frightened, you were talking to a man who was laughed in the face of death, sneered at doom, and chuckled at catastrophe. I was petrified. And suddenly, the winds changed. And I was transported down into the heart of this noble scene, where I was proclaimed Oz, the first wizard in the world. Did lots, from the French, dating the lunchery. Well, there were a few luxuries that went with the job, but I took it anyway, keeping the blue as I went on a quick getaway. And in that convenience, my dear Dorothy, you and I shall return to the land of Glorius Hunum. Step this way, Dorothy, step this way. Citizens of Oz, I, your wizard, our adura, Adalta, am about to embark on a hazardous and technically unexplainable journey into the outer stratosphere. To converse, converse, and otherwise obnur with my brother wizards. And on this certain that time, if any, that I shall return, scarecrow, by virtue of his highly superior brains, shall rule in my stead, assisted by Tin Man, by virtue of his magnificent heart, and Lion, by virtue of his courage. Obey them as you would me. Thank you, my friends, thank you. And now I think it is time to cast up. Fly aboard, Dorothy, fly aboard.
Fly aboard, miss... What a sensitive thing!
Wait, wait a second. Well, where's Toto? I can't go without Toto, Toto!
Don't worry, I'll have it for you. Don't let go of the rope! This is absolutely unprecedented, the blues going up. Well, help, help!
Professor, you can't go!
It's too late, my dear, Ken's come back.
Professor, you have to, you can't live without me!
I don't know how it works. Goodbye!
No!
Goodbye! That Ian Gar just ruined my accent.
Dorothy! Auntie Auntie! Oh, Dorothy, you saved me, wow! Thanks to you, Auntie Auntie, you showed me how to use the slippers. Oh, I won't use a slipper on you, honey, you haven't done anything wrong. No, no, you don't understand! This was a rare, truly like place. And I remember some of it wasn't very nice, but most of it was beautiful. And you were all there. You kept rustling up, and you kept pulling your hair. And you, you're a muckle!
Well, now, let's not get personal.
Does anyone believe me? Of course we believe you, Dorothy, but now we got to get you in the bed. So the house has come back and fell on the witch, you know?
Storm patch drive by.
And it wasn't the house that fell on these buildings, it was the toilet crap.
We won't be hearing from that old man until Harley gets our plaster.
And Toto's safe? Oh, you hear that, Toto? We're safe! And we're all... Home. And you're all here. And I'd never, ever leave you again, because I love you all so much. And oh, Auntie Auntie, there really is no place like home.
All right, welcome, boys and girls, to our summer fun with theater class. We have twenty-five students in this class, and they will be presenting a play in Epperson's pose. We have twenty-five students in this class and they will be presenting a play in Emperor's clothes.
Story's so exciting. A tale that everybody knows. We've got stories so revealing. About an emperor with no clothes. We've got stories so exciting. A tale that will not let you chose. We've got stories that will grab you. About an emperor with no clothes. Our emperor is wise. Our emperor is fair. Whenever there is a problem, our emperor is there. We've got stories so exciting, we've got stories so exciting. A tale that worked like every show. We've got stories so revealing, we've got stories so revealing. About an emperor with no clothes. Our emperor is kind. And generous as well. Whenever we may need her, our emperor can tell. We've got stories so exciting, we've got stories so exciting. A tale that everybody knows. We've got stories so revealing, we've got stories so revealing. About an emperor with no clothes. About an emperor with no clothes.
The happy thing of asking everything. There are many good people, but you're not. Fortunately, the emperor's one of the good people. Here are her advisors who will tell us about the emperor's most days of happiness.
She's emperor all day and emperor all night. When she's tired and crabby and not feeling kind. She has her positive and all her side. And they're the one greatest favorites of life. She loves clothes, brand new clothes. Such as her one put her under a spell. And it sure feels that wonderful new smelling smell. She loves clothes, brand new clothes. Her foot love feet make her feel like a queen. But she is, mine clothes, the most marvelous thing. And our kingdom is happy. We all wear a smile. Our friends are so good folk for my other man. The harvest is splendid. We'll all make a home. So it's only fitting that ruler has sad, and sad, and sad. She loves clothes, brand new clothes. Such as suspenders and pocket knife knives. With the wheels for her feet and gold chains for her eyes. She loves clothes, brand new clothes. Her foot love feet make her feel like a queen. But she is, mine clothes, the most marvelous thing.
They're pretending to be famous fashion designers, but they're really good. They don't know how to sew at all. They're trying to fool the emperor.
My queen, aren't you ready for a really cool outfit? Something you could wear with a harvest parade and everybody would look?
Oh, I don't know.
Snap to it, your highness. This is your chance. We're not talking about normal boring clothes. We got something special lined for you.
Imagine a fabric as dull as grass. This musters such sheen. Can only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class. Interesting. Will make you so bold now that none surpass. The sparkle's so keen. Can only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class.
I'm pretty sure.
You guys sense a style unequal?
I do, I do.
Such chase as everybody knows.
Well, yes, it's true.
Soon all the people will be talking.
They really liked my outfits.
About the emperor with new clothes.
Excellent.
Imagine a fabric as dull as grass. This sparkle's so keen. Can only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class.
Let's do it.
Imagine a fabric as dull as grass. This sparkle's so keen. Can only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class. Can only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class. Be seen by people with class.
The court's announced that they require all the best materials in the kingdom. All the most expensive supplies to make this wonderful new set of clothes for the emperor. The palace workers can barely carry an ounce.
A barrel of diamonds, a basket of gold. He's still smiling, every stone's been rolled. A barrel of silver, a basket of silk. And thirty-three gallons of chocolate. And they got a lot of jewels. The gold and all its souls. The wonder of the emperor must be. Hey, 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 hey. And they got a lot of stuff. Nothing seems to be enough. And everyone wants to rip stuff away, rip stuff away. Resistance to the groats. Don't give us those dirty looks. We are here to tell you what is what. They're inside the groats and they... They may not be all the same. That is why the door is always shut. They pretend to make other clothes. They pretend that they can sew. Quite insane, they're stealing all the gold. No one is allowed inside. Only we know how to do it. They may not be upright, but their shirt hold.
The emperor is truly excited about her new clothes. But soon she agreed not to look into the figure. She's going crazy for curiosity. So she decides to send the royal baker to look in the door and find out what's going on. Knock, knock. The royal baker was a bonus for the tailors.
Go away, we're famous tailors and we're not hungry.
The baker didn't even get a peek at the new clothes. Imagine how the emperor feels. So he decides to try again. This time, she sends the royal carpenter.
The royal carpenter here to, um... Do some carpenter-type stuff?
Go away, we already have cool tables.
The emperor doesn't go up easily, so she tries again by sending a very special person, the royal furnace repairman. The royal furnace repairman to check on the heating.
Go away and don't come back!
The harvest day parade is almost here. And even if the emperor doesn't know what her clothes look like, well, we're still going to have fun.
Everybody hit the streets. We got corn and we got wheat. It's the harvest day parade today. Hey, 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 hey. Everybody clap and shout, woo, woo. Let the celebrations crowd. It's the harvest day parade today. Don't be shy, grab a carrot. Aren't these beans good? Why can't you read them together? It's a friend of mine, come along, grab a apple. Aren't these pots full of stuffing and a lot? It's a man I trust. Everybody hit the streets. We got corn and we got wheat. It's the harvest day parade today. Hey, 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 hey. Everybody clap and shout, woo, woo. Let the celebrations crowd. It's the harvest day parade today.
The emperor is waiting impatiently for the crop. That is, the tailors to bring in her new outfit.
Imagine a fabric as dull as grass. This musters such sheen. Can only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class.
But I really don't see.
Make you so bold now that none surpass. The sparkle's so keen. And you only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class. You guys sense a style unequal?
Yes, but...
Such chase as everybody knows.
I suppose that's true.
Soon all the people will be talking.
Always like my outfits.
About the emperor with new clothes.
I don't know what to say.
Imagine a fabric as dull as grass. This sparkle's so keen. And you only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class. Can only be seen, be seen, be seen by people with class. Be seen by people with class.
I'm Jeannie Carpenter, I'm forty-three years old. I live in the village of Oregon. My husband, Uriah Carpenter, and I have lived here for sixteen years. And we've loved every minute of it. We chose to live in Oregon because we both worked in Madison. And Oregon seemed like a great place. We raised our daughter here. She graduated from high school last year and now she's at M A T C in the veterinary technician program. A little bit about my background, my education. I have a bachelor of arts degree from UW-Platville in English and Journalism. And that has served me well in my communications work and writing work. And now my life is all about cheese. If you've seen me around in my car, I have the Cheese Geek license plates. I teach cheese classes at the Firefly. I pay my mortgage by working at McCas Market as a specialty cheese manager. And then for fun, I run this organization called Wisconsin Cheese Originals. And that's the business that I do lots of my tours, my events, my classes. And I'm happy to be a Chamber, Oregon Chamber of Commerce member through Wisconsin Cheese Originals. Qualifications. My background and training. I am actually a very proud graduate of the Leadership Wisconsin Program, which has been around for almost thirty-five years. And that is a two-year leadership program run through the University of Wisconsin here at Madison. I graduated from that in 2008. I would equate it much like getting a master's degree in leadership. So I was very happy about that. And then also taken several communication courses and obviously things about cheese, since that's what I do for a living. I'm very excited that last year I passed the American Cheese Society Certified Cheese Professional Exam. So now I am one of four hundred nationally certified cheese experts in the United States. So that was a big step and I'm glad that test is over. So that was a big step, and I'm glad that test is over, because that was really hard. My only previous political experience is my last two years on the Village Board. I ran two years ago unopposed and was very happy that you all elected me. Thank you very much. And now I am asking for your vote again. The responsibilities of office as a Village Board trustee are pretty simple. I view them as to listen, to learn, and to lead. I have never come into office with a super-duper agenda of, "I'm gonna get this done and we're gonna push this through." I have always believed that we listen to what our constituents want, what the taxpayers can afford. And I'm very pleased that in the last two years, the Village of Oregon has been very fiscally conservative. If you live in the village, you know that your taxes, at least the village portion, actually went down this year. And that's not an accident. We're very fiscally conservative on the board, and we believe in spending taxpayer dollars wisely. The reasons I'm running for reelection is because, believe it or not, local politics is a lot of fun. It's a really great way to stay active in your community. I enjoy going to the meetings. I enjoy learning about what opportunities we have for our village. We are actually in, right in the beginning of a very exciting five-year capital improvement plan that our amazing administration, our staff at the Village Hall are helping us with. We have some great staff. We're very lucky to have them. What's one of our priorities is to keep them. And one of the things that I'm really excited about in that plan, that five-year capital improvement plan, is to finish the extension of North Perry Parkway. And if you live in the village, you know exactly where this is, because it's the road that would connect, the road that goes past the high school to South Perry Parkway. Right now, it's the compost pile and a swamp. And that's one of our goals, I think all of our goals on the Village Board, is to complete that thoroughfare, because that is a direct artery to our high school, to most of the parks on that side of the village, and almost all of our athletic fields. So if we can get that done in the next five years, that would be really, really beneficial for village residents. So that's probably my number-one priority. So why am I asking Oregon Village voters to vote for me? I really, really like this village. I grew up on a farm between Belmont and Mineral Point, and I suppose most people will say that their hometown is where they grew up. But after 16 years of living in Oregon, I tell people this is my hometown. This is where my husband and I are probably gonna live forever. It's where we raised our daughter. All of our friends are here. And so I have this super vested interest in to keep Oregon a vibrant, lively, healthy, fiscally-healthy village, where I want to not only work, but I want to live. And I think that's what I bring, is I bring an excitement for the Village of Oregon. I bring an open mind to listen and learning the topics and the things that people bring forward to us. And I don't have a specific agenda, other than I want to make Oregon a good place to live. So I appreciate your vote, Jeannie Carpenter. And if you want to get ahold of me, my contact info, give me a call anytime. I've had the same cellphone number for like 14 years. It is 608-358-7837. And my email, also the same forever, is my first name, Jeannie, J-E-A-N-N-E, at wordartisanllc.com. So I appreciate your time and your vote. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ben Cowan. I am 33 years old. I live right here in Oregon in the Village. Graduated Oregon High School in 2000. Lived in the town of Oregon pretty much my entire life, until after high school I went to college for a year at University of Wisconsin-Parkside. After my first year of college, I decided to go out to California, try to play professional golf, where I played on mini-tours out there for a few years. Then I just, I decided one day to move back here, and that was seven years ago. And I've been into, out in the community, done a lot of things, especially with the hockey rink, and then obviously golf. I coached the Boys and Girls Golf Team for two years. And really, just now that I'm getting into this stage of my life, which, like I said, I'm 33, I'm pretty young. But I just, I wanna make sure that I have a voice in what happens in Oregon. And I see a lot of development potential. I've seen what's happened to Verona, with Epic coming in. And I think it'd just be really nice to have a say in the direction that we go. Qualifications. This is my first time running for anything like this. You know, I do run multiple businesses. I have a business right now called Full Scale Promotions, which we're identity branding specialists. We do branded apparel and promotional items, and been doing that for a while. Along with that, I'm on a couple different boards. Specifically, one's called, it's for the MDA Muscular Dystrophy Association. It is, we're doing a Muscle Up event. And it's a fundraiser event that they're in their fourth year, I believe, third or fourth year. I just joined this year. And it's an event that raises money for the MDA Association or organization. I believe last year they raised close to $100,000, so I'll get to play a part in that, which I think is pretty fantastic. So, you know, responsibilities of office. You know, I'm not exactly sure what they are. All I know is that I am young. I have multiple businesses. I'm very driven to succeed, and I wanna see Oregon succeed. And I don't know if it's stagnant. I don't know if, you know, what's going on, which basically, I just, I wanna get in, have a voice, and make sure that Oregon continues to grow, and grow the right way. You know, there's some businesses that I've seen in the local communities that shouldn't be in there, and I wanna make sure that Oregon doesn't have the wrong businesses come in. So again, it's about identity. You know, really figure out what Oregon's identity in, and then really kind of capturing that and being able to market that to bring the right businesses in. Reasons for running for this office now. You know, I, like I had mentioned before, you know, I was raised in the town of Oregon. I never got into politics. I never liked them. Didn't have, never thought I'd even consider running for a board position anywhere. But now that I'm living in the village, you know, my girlfriend just bought a house. We live, you know, 342 Lynn Trail. It's gonna be on everything everybody knows. You know, just bought that house, so living in the village. And, you know, I just, again, I just, I wanna make sure that I have a voice. And Village, the Village Board, they make a lot of decisions, you know, as far as what's happening in the village, where the roads are going, what's happening in the parks, bike trail, what businesses are coming in. And my real reason is, I just, I wanna have a say, and I wanna make sure that we go in the correct direction. My two issues are, you know, first impressions are very important, especially when it comes to identity. And, you know, I've changed mine over the course of this last seven years, since I've been back, which I think is pretty positive. But when you come into Oregon from either direction, it's, you don't get a good feel. It doesn't feel good. You know, like if you're coming from the north, taking the first Oregon exit, our road coming into Oregon is, I mean, everybody's driven, it's bumpy, it sucks. And I believe that's Fitchburg's responsibility, but, you know, we need to have an active voice on our board to go after Fitchburg, to fix the road, if that may be the case, you know, that Fitchburg has to pay for it. And then coming from the other side, you know, I just, I just don't like what's there. I mean, the first impression is, you know, you have a storage unit, which I know that's not gonna move anytime soon, you know, a efficiency motel, which, you know, I've driven by there plenty of times. I just, I don't like the character that I see up front there. And then behind that is the old, broken-down, rundown, you know, vacant old restaurant. And those are all things that you see immediately when you come into our town. So I just, I wanna clean it up. I wanna clean the image of our town up. You know, I love, after you get past all that, and you get into, you know, Pizza Hut, that building, you know, that's pretty to me. Like, it's a good-looking building. I'd like to see more of that happen, and then more of a, you know, real build station to the downtown, which downtown, you know, they've done a really nice job down there. But I think we have room to expand our downtown, expand parking. And I think that all that comes from the Village Board, and, you know, really partnering and finding people that can come in and actually do those projects, as far as like commercial development, and just having the vision. I think the vision of what downtown should look like, I think is important. And I think, you know, with me being young and wanting to see that, I'm gonna live here my entire life. So I wanna make sure that I live in a village, you know, town that's, you know, that's pretty. I wanna be able to bring guests here, and they're like, "Wow, you live here, Oregon? This is great." But last but not, you know, why should Oregon voters vote for me? That's a good question. And that's one that, you know, when I, when I, you know, registered to be, you know, on the ballot, you know, I got, I don't wanna say talked into it, but I was meeting with Jeff Boudreau, who's on the board, and him and I were playing cards or dominos or cribbage or something at Firefly one day. And he's like, and he's like, "You know, we could use some youth on the board. You know, we could use some, you know, somebody with your mind, you know, kind of your passion to make things better. So why don't you consider it?" So I've been considering it, and, you know, there's part of me that, I'm like, "Well, why, would I vote for me?" I don't know. You know, it's a, it's a good question. But I think at the end of the day, people will vote for me, you know, because I am young. I am charismatic. And I wanna see Oregon, you know, thrive. I don't want it just to maintain. I wanna see, you know, people coming from Madison, from, coming to Oregon, because we have the best restaurants. You know, we have the best parks, we have the best school district. All those things, I think, are really important. It's just, it's a passion for Oregon, and people, I guess, all over, you know, I do a lot of business in Madison, and they're like, "Well, why do you live in Oregon?" It's 'cause it's my town. You know, I just, I love, I love it here. You know, we're gonna raise a family here, and, you know, my girlfriend, she's got three daughters that I couldn't imagine, you know, I've lived plenty of other places in my life. I just, I couldn't imagine a better place to have a family, to get involved, and, you know, I really like the people here. Okay, I guess to summarize, you know, everything we've talked about, at the end of the day, I see the big picture. And just, I've always been a big-picture guy. I see things, I see things at the end, so from the, you know, from the end to the start, it's, okay, if you can imagine what it looks like, okay, then you can start piecing it together to get to that. I have a vision for Oregon, and there's another member of the board who, you know, I've talked to, has a very similar vision for especially our downtown area. But I think with all of that, you know, it's having the plan, and if you can see what it looks like, and you can explain to others what it looks like, then all the other pieces start to fall in place. You know, that's where, you know, like, we're talking here, you know, not one specific road gets fixed, it's we have a plan to fix all the roads. You know, not just one park gets updated, we have a plan to update all the parks. And I think with youth on the board and a drive to make that happen, that's where those things will get done. So it's having that passion to see the bigger picture, which I have in my head, and I'd love to share with everybody. I think, you know, not to compare ourselves to any other towns, but I believe Verona has done a very nice job. You know, they're expanding, and I know, you know, this gentleman, Dean Slavy, he's, Liberty Park is gonna blow up, you know, beautiful apartments, more restaurants. And it's something that, do we want that necessarily in our community, to expand that big? Probably not. You know, I like the bedroom community feel. But I think, you know, with having this overall vision of making it nicer, I think everything that comes into Oregon will be a little bit nicer. And I think that's, that's really what, like, I'd like to see. I don't want rundown buildings. I don't want, you know, rundown streets and parks. Like, I want everything just to get, just get a little bit better and keep continuing to get better, until we get it to a point where, you know, as a whole, we have a beautiful community. So again, my name is Ben Cowan. I'm running for Village Board. So come vote, April 7th, 2015.
Hello. My name is Eric Poole. I am 54 years old. I am a current resident of the Village of Oregon for over 25 years. I'm married and have one daughter. I've gone to school to become a land surveyor, and I have a degree in land surveying. I currently work as a siding contractor for Home Specialists on Park Street in Madison, and I'm also a licensed contractor for the state of Wisconsin. I've been on the Village Board now for over 14 years. I've attended numerous meetings on many issues, and I've been a chairman of every committee the village has, as well as a committee member for those committees. I'm currently the chairman of the Public Works Committee, and would appreciate your vote on, in April. I don't know the date. I don't know what the date is in April. Again, let's see, again, I would appreciate your vote in April, as I run for my seventh term as Village Trustee. Current issues that the village are facing right now is, I'd like to see the completion of a hotel for the Chamber of Commerce especially, to help them with their budget, so they can do many things that they need to do to also help the village grow. We are currently working on a bicycle trail on the northwest side of the village. I'd like to see that completed, as well as possibly expanding our industrial park to the southeast side of the village across Highway 14 going towards Stoughton. I know all these projects are gonna take a lot of money. The village currently is working on a very responsible fiscal plan to do these projects without major increase in property taxes for village residents. In the past, I've supported as many projects as we could without raising your taxes the best we can, and I felt the village has been very responsible in that way. Again, we've got many issues coming, and many fiscal issues coming, as we have been placed with many revenue caps from the state and stuff like that. And I feel, as a trustee for the past 14 years, I've been able to maintain as much of the level that the village residents appreciate and need. I've been endorsed by many of the Oregon Police Department officers. They feel I'm a person they can come to and talk with and trust, and therefore, again, I would appreciate your vote as I run for reelection in April of this year. Thank you. And my website, or I don't have an actual website, but if you would like to reach me, you can email me at ericpoole134@gmail.com, or my cellphone number is area code 608-215-0424. And I promise to return each email or cellphone call and talk with you the best I can to help you understand what's going on in the village and anything I can do to help. Have a great day. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Marilyn McDoll, and I'm running for Oregon School Board seat in Area 1 in the Village. Now remember, everybody in the district can vote for me, but I have to represent Area 1. My husband and I have lived in Oregon for about 12 years, and I, and we've been married 34 years. I spent more than 17-plus years working at UW-Madison and UW Extension. I worked in a variety of positions, starting at Program Assistant to Department Administrator at Forest Ecology and Management at UW-Madison, where I worked in budget work, human resources, timetable backup, all sorts of things, and supervision also, all sorts of responsibilities. In addition, I then moved to become a specialized person in my work. I was a financial specialist at UW-Madison Medical School, and also then later at the Dean's Office at Continuing Education and Extension in, on the outreach and e-learning area, and spent for about three years there. I retired in 2012, and I've been looking for a good way to serve my community. I've worked at the Friends of the Library and helped with book sales and gotten to know a lot of different people that I didn't have time to know before, when I was working full-time. So I'm really excited about a chance to serve, and a chance to help my community, because my background and my education, which includes a bachelor's degree in English from the University of Illinois in Champaign, and a master's degree in Business Education from UW-Whitewater, will help me in my position as a school board member. I have a lot of experience, again, doing budget work, budget development, budget management, and tracking fiscal issues in a variety of educational settings. Let me tell you a little bit about my previous background, before I came to Wisconsin. I grew up in the western suburbs of Chicago. I ask that dear native Wisconsinites not hold that against me. I came up here a long time ago. I had met my husband, who lived in, who's from rural northeast Dane County. And so we got together, and I moved up here after 10 years at Champaign. And I've enjoyed myself greatly living in the state of Wisconsin. I come from both a service and a business background. My father ran YMCA's in Chicago. He was an executive director of a couple of YMCA's. And my mother was in business, working with, at a knitting mill. So the two together brought me both ability to see the big picture, which was Dad, and the small detail, which was Mom. And so I... And so I am fortunate in being able to understand issues from both perspectives. It doesn't always come together for people that way. I've been told that by one of my prior supervisors, Andrew Murphy, who is endorsing me for this job, uh, this position on the school board, that it's very rare and that the school board would be very fortunate to have me and my skills serve, you know, the children of the district. I spent 10 years in Champaign and I've worked really hard, um, developing as a person, developing as a caring person. Uh, 17 plus years of experience at UW-Madison and UW Extension have really, really honed my skills and my abilities to help the school board. Uh, some of the issues on the school board are going to be, um, faced very soon with cuts in, in, in funding from the state. We're expecting nearly a half a million dollar deficit if the state budget stays as it is. It may not, but we won't know until May and I don't anticipate the entire budget being restored. So we have to have somebody on board who understands the numbers, understands the priorities of the academic and supportive academic programs particularly, uh, as well as as much extracurricular as possible in this situation. So I am asking for your support, uh, on April 7th. My, uh, I have a website, uh, at www.electmarijuana.com and you can call me on my cell at 608-512-5674 for more information and discussion of my, my policies and, um, for volunteering, contributing, or wanting a yard sign. Thank you very much for your time and again, I'm asking for your vote and support on April 7th.
Hello, my name is Steve Zock, I am a candidate for the Oregon, uh, or the Village of Oregon School Board seat. Uh, I am currently the occupant of that seat, I've, uh, served on the Oregon School Board for 16 years. Uh, since I've been on the board, I've served on all of the committees that the board has had, including, uh, finance, negotiations, policy, uh, physical assets, and I've been the chair of the policy committee as well. Um, I have been an invited speaker four times to the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Um, I am a graduate of Oregon High School, I graduated in 1976, went to Saint Norbert College into Pierce, Wisconsin, uh, graduated in 1980. At that time, I went to the University of Wisconsin Law School and got my, uh, law degree in 1983, started practice at, uh, the Boardman Law Firm at that point in time and I've been there ever since for approximately 33 years. I have been married for 32 years to Patty, who's a medical technologist at Oregon Dean and I, we are the, uh, parents of three children. Caitlin, who is, uh, an administrative intern at Brooklyn Elementary, Bridget, who is a teacher in the Monroe School District, she teaches third grade this year, and Maureen, who graduated last year from College Augustana College in the Quad Cities and she right now is in Bolivia, uh, for a year-long mission trip, she's working with kids at a school down there. First thing that I want to talk with you today about is why I'm running for school board. I'm going to tell you three stories that, uh, emphasize why, um, I have served for 16 years and why I'm looking for three more years. As I indicated, my daughter Bridget is a school teacher in Monroe in third grade and they have a child who has fairly profound cerebral palsy, uh, in her classroom and she's wheelchair-bound. Um, she also has a student in her classroom who is somewhat at risk, uh, his behavior is fine at times and at times it's not. Well, this at-risk boy, uh, has taken it upon himself to be the caretaker of the young woman with cerebral palsy. Well, the young woman, uh, had some medical issues recently, was hospitalized for six weeks and then the young boy was out of sorts for that period of time, as was the class. And I continued to get calls and messages from my daughter about how the girl's absence profoundly affected their class and in particular, this boy. I got a call yesterday from Bridget, who told me that the girl returned to the classroom and she explained to me the celebration that occurred in their third grade classroom that one of their own was back, this girl who has profound cerebral palsy, is wheelchair-bound and who is the love of their class. Public schools and the public school system in Wisconsin educate all students and we have a constitutional mission to do that. That has been the forefront of my service on the board. It was, um, instilled in me by the board president, uh, when I took over Dave Williams and Linda Barrows as superintendent and has been the core of our service, uh, for the past 16 years. That is, our mission is our students and that means all students. The second story that I'm going to tell you is about my daughter Caitlin, who is, uh, an administrative intern down in Brooklyn Elementary and, uh, before that, she was a K4 music teacher down there. She invited me down in February to a program that the PTO was sponsoring where teachers are running games, it was a carnival, uh, that evening and, um, I was taking tickets and I noticed that, um, a lot of the students were wearing ties and so I asked them why they were wearing ties and they said it was Dale Schultz Day. Well, Dale Schultz is a teacher at Brooklyn who's been there 41 years. Uh, he appeared at our school board meeting last Monday night, uh, when we reluctantly accepted his resignation and my comment to Dale at that time was that, um, he served as a role model for kids for 41 years, to the extent that those kids, uh, created the day for him and wore ties in his honor. And as the good role model that he was, he wasn't wearing a tie on the day that, um, they were wearing ties, so he went into the closet and fashioned a makeshift tie for himself, just because that's the role model he is. On that night, I got to witness my daughter interact among the students at Brooklyn Elementary and saw how they flocked to her and the joy that was in her eyes as a teacher. And so, another reason why I have served for 16 years on the board and look forward to another three years is because we serve an important role for the students in our district and as a lifelong member of this community, I want to give back and to serve in that role as well. The third story I want to tell you, uh, is about my daughter Maureen, um, who lives in Bolivia right now, but last year spent, uh, six weeks in Ghana, Africa, and she worked in an orphanage there. And she sent us a picture with her in a little hut at this orphanage where she worked, with a little, uh, African boy on her shoulders and they were all smiles. And she emailed me back and indicated to me that she'd really like to bring him home if she could, because she knew that if she brought him here to our state, to our community where he'd have the benefit of public schools, that this boy would thrive, rather than being in an orphanage in a city of 3 million people, where his, uh, chance to reach his full potential was minimal at best. That's what public education does in this country, that's what it does in the state and what it's done in this community and I like being a part of that and I would like to give three more years back in that regard. I want to tell you right now what we do as a school board. Um, we are charged by state statute to oversee the operations of the school district and that means, uh, working with a budget of $51 million, where we're, uh, charged with the responsibility of spending that wisely and appropriately. We are the largest employer in the Village of Oregon, we employ over 500 people, we want to make sure that we have a safe and nurturing environment for our employees. We oversee a physical asset base of at least a quarter billion dollars and we need to oversee that. And we're charged with a special duty of overseeing the education of 3,800 students in our district. So that's a very significant responsibility. Important in carrying out that charge is recognizing our role as board members and that is to set policy and to set the overs, overall direction of the district. And it's our responsibility then to hire a superintendent who then is in charge of developing an administrative team and a teaching and support staff to oversee that. Those boundaries are incredibly important. We cannot, as a board, get into the day-to-day operations of the district. We need to trust the people that we hire, that they're going to do the best that we can and then we need to oversee them and make sure that they're doing that correctly. Why am I, uh, response, why am I qualified to do this and to oversee those tasks? Uh, I'm going to let you know a, a few of those points. One is, I'm a lifelong resident of the Village of Oregon, I very much care about the community, I've, uh, been involved in a number of community activities, including the school board, so I have a fondness in making sure that our district is the best possible. Second is, I have 16 years of experience on the board and experience matters. I think if you talk to, uh, any board member who's served in the past, it takes at least three years to begin to figure out the full breadth of responsibilities and the issues that are before you. Right now on our current board, I am the only board member who's served one full term and it is going to be incredibly important as we face the issues, uh, in the next three years that you have experience on the board and I think that's why it's important with my experience that, that, that I be reelected. That experience will help us as we move through, uh, the next three years. Third, uh, in my practice of law, um, I represent school districts across the state and so I'm very familiar with issues that are facing school districts, both in terms of the educational practices and in the operation of school districts. So I bring to the board that background and experience. Fourth, uh, I have been intimately involved in a number of critical operations in the district over the past several years, including the teacher compensation committee and the development of policies and I want to walk through with you now a number of issues that will face the board and how my experience, uh, will help in that regard. The first significant issue that we're going to be dealing with is our budget process. That's a challenge every year to make sure that we develop a fiscally responsible budgets that recognize the balance between our educational needs and the interest of our taxpayers. It's becoming more critical this year because the budget that we have from the governor right now, the proposed budget, uh, creates a half a million dollar budget gap. When you add to that an anticipated quarter million dollar increase in health insurance premiums and a cost of living increase for employee compensation, we're faced at this point with a 1.2 million dollar budget gap. I've faced these issues before on two other occasions during my, uh, 12, 16-year term. We have faced significant shortfalls in funding, uh, from the state government. Uh, the first time that we did that under, uh, Dr. Barrow's superintendency, we worked through a functional analysis process where we identified savings and means by which we could close that funding gap and we did so without having to lay off any employees. In 2011, the same year that Governor Walker, uh, moved through Act 10 in the district, he also cut significantly our budget, uh, and we had to deal with the gap at that time. I was one of the leaders on the board who set a policy in the district that we would solve that budget shortfall by means, uh, in which we would not, uh, cut programming and we would not lay off staff and we were able to do that. That puts me in a unique position amongst the board of being able to walk through the funding gap that the current budget crisis and the current budget proposal has placed us in. The second issue that we're going to face is having to implement, uh, the building project that was authorized by our 55 million dollar referendum. It was a significant vote of confidence given to us by the taxpayers of the district. We have a good plan, we have tremendous financing in place for that, we have a great team, uh, ready to implement that plan. Uh, I was involved in the last construction project, yeah, in the school district, that is the building of Rome Corners about 11 years ago and so I'm familiar with what has to happen during a construction process and what role the board plays in that. For the Rome Corner project, we were as a district able to bring that project in on time. We built a beautiful building and we brought it a half million dollars under cost. That experience will be essential for the board as we move forward with, uh, building out 55 million dollars in projects. The third issue that we're going to face as a district is, uh, adopting a new teacher compensation plan. We need to do that because with Act 10, the salary schedule that had in place under our collective bargaining agreements are no longer there and we need a new mechanism by which we determine how we compensate our teachers over the long term so that we can, uh, attract and retain the best teachers to this district. In my legal work, I have been involved in educating our client base on the various forms of compensation systems that have been adopted across the country and in the state, uh, and have brought that experience, uh, to this district. I was initially appointed to the task force that was studying this when I was removed from that, uh, position in April with the turnover of the board last year. Nonetheless, as we move forward to, uh, work on a teacher compensation plan, my experience and knowledge in how those are developed, what form they take and how they are funded will be essential as, as we, uh, work towards adoption of that. Finally, education over the last 16 years since I've been on the board has changed dramatically across the world, in the state and in this district. Technology has brought us new forms of delivering, uh, education to our students. Because of that, there are new forms of competition out there in the world which our students can turn to, to get their education. We need to stay current on those trends, we need to move forward into this new educational paradigm. Over the 16 years that I've been on the board, I've been one of the drafters of three position papers that the board has adopted that have addressed the changing nature of education and have moved this district along the path toward a new educational model. A couple of weeks ago, I was at the district office and there was a busload of teachers that came into our district from the Madison School District to view our personalized learning initiative that was taking place in our elementary and other schools. On that day, they were visiting our elementary schools and it was significant to me that we have become a focus spot for other school districts to come to, to look at what we are doing in terms of personalized learning. That was one of the initiatives that we started talking about 10 years on the board, that I helped, uh, move forward through the adoption of papers and what we're continuing to, uh, work on as we move forward. Our district has not only been looked at by the Madison School District, by, by other school districts across the state of Wisconsin and the region and also from representatives from other countries to see what we're doing. I'm very proud of the work that I've done in, uh, helping look to the future in terms of educational practices, uh, in the Oregon School District. Right now, our board is in the process of writing a fourth paper and looking toward the next five to 10 years in terms of a educational strategic plan. I'm taking the lead in drafting the outline of what that would look like as we move through our process with the board, with our administrators and with our staff. So those are four areas that I think are going to be significant in the coming year and my background, uh, in each of those areas... And my background in each of those areas, that I think position me in terms of being able to assist this district forward. Just for all those reasons that I'm seeking reelection to my seat on the Oregon School District Board of Education for the next three years, you can find out more about me at my website and my Facebook page. To do that, just Google Steve Zock and Vote, and that will direct you to those. Thank you very much for the time in watching me and learning more about me and why I want to be on the board.
Next year below will sing the popular tune when you say nothing at all. Lexi Fung Chu will be accompanying her on guitar and Man Har will be accompanying her on bass. Check.
Yeah.
We need the other two banks up.
It's amazing how you can speak right to my heart. Without saying a word, you can light up the dark. Try as I may, I could never explain. What I feel when you don't say a thing. The smile on your face lets me know that you need me. There's a truth in your eyes saying you'll never leave me. A touch of your hand says you'll catch me if ever I fall. You say it best when you say nothing at all.
[998.18]